Welcome, welcome to the Agora Hills City Council Goal Setting Workshop. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers and also by utilizing video conferencing. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices and do not access Zoom during the live meeting as it will cause interference with our audio visual system in the council chambers. Tonight's meeting may be viewed on the Zoom via the link on the agenda by livestream on YouTube by entering Agora Hills City Council Meeting in your browser and clicking on the link for May 10, 2023, or view the live or archive meeting on the city's website at agorahillscity.org and click on the Watch Meetings Online button. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mary Anstead. Public comments are limited to the discussion item on tonight's agenda. Any person in the council chambers who wishes to speak or submit a written comment is requested to complete a comment card for each item and submit it to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. Comments submitted at the meeting will be provided to the city council for review and filed with the official record. For any person participating remotely, written public comments were requested to be emailed by 2:00 PM today and distributed to the city council in advance of the meeting. To request a speak during public comment, please click on the Raise Hand button on the Zoom toolbar. Request a speak must be received prior to the mayor closing the public comment portion of the item. Public testimony for all speakers is limited to three minutes per speaker. Written public comments will not be read aloud by the city clerk. For full details, please refer to the Public Participation section on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call this meeting to order, and I will ask Councilmember Wolf to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. If we could please stand and place our right hand over our heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Protem Buckley-Weber?
Present.
Mayor Anstead?
Here.
Mayor Anstead, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and second to approve the agenda, please state your names.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. This is Deborah Klein Lopez.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Sylvester seconds.
Thank you. I'll now defer to the city clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Anstead, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. I will now move to public comments. This section is reserved for public comments relating to the goal setting workshop. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click the Raised Hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I will now defer to the city clerk for public comments.
Thank you, Mary Anstead. No written public comments have been received and no speaker cards have been submitted. I'll now defer to staff for any remote participants. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor Anstead. No hands are raised to speak on this item.
Great, thank you very much. Now move into our discussion action items. Our next item is a discussion of the city council's short and long-term goals. I will now defer to our great city manager, Nate Hamburg, for the staff presentation.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Honorable councilmembers, great. I've never been called out. That's a new one. Starting off on the right foot.
Exactly. So, I am glad to be presenting our goal-setting workshop number two and to go over the goals that are recommended by the subcommittees. I would be missed if I didn't first thank the council for all your efforts on the subcommittees. I know that was a lot of work, all of our staff, our finance staff, Ms. Rulson, and we've got brand-new finance staff. They've done amazing things. They jumped right into the meeting, so very impressive, and I just want to thank everybody for all their efforts. So with that, I'll dive into the next slide. And tonight will be, or this afternoon, we'll be looking at all of the recommendations from the different subcommittees. I will highlight a couple of things on the budget process for you before we dive into that, and we'll have an update from our community services director as well. Just to explain the process for you, as we go through each of the subcommittees, I will pause and allow for questions and comments that you may have on the recommendations or goals that were not recommended, and we can work through those, and then we'll move forward to the next subcommittee after that. With that, we'll move on to the next slide. Just generally want to talk about our budget process. We've, are very deep into that, and we have a good draft at this point. A lot of detail has been clarified, looking at our revenues. We've got better predictions up to date, and we'll have final numbers for you at your June workshop, and looking forward to that. Ms. Rulson and her staff have been helping finalize that. The goals, just as you look at them this afternoon, I want you just to be aware that what is proposed as of right now in this presentation will fit into the budget and will allow us to have a balanced budget, and I know that when you're making decisions, that's important to consider. The workload capacity, so I will talk just a little bit about what we, we've got some, an aggressive work plan in front of us. It is something that I think we can accomplish, but I do need to iterate that if we're going to add something, I would ask that you consider removing something else. It is a little bit of trading, but I do want to be realistic in what we can accomplish for the community and the council. And we're glad to have any discussion, providing information that we can't help make that decision, but I do think that that's important to lay out. The last thing I just want to highlight is, within our budget, we are completing some large capital projects, seeking reimbursements and audits from those, and then we're starting, you know, linear parks particularly next year, and so that'll be a larger project that we are fronting funds for. So I highlight that because I always want to thank the council for the general fund reserve and your conservative efforts in making that available because that allows us to do these type of projects for the community. So with that, I just want to, there's a couple expenditure considerations that I'd like to look at. The first is our art in public places. The fund of itself is about $138,000, and the reason I'm bringing this up is I just want to kind of earmark funds for the linear park, the art that will be in there. We believe it'll be a couple pieces. The community services subcommittee has looked at it, and this is really just so that we have a mark in the budget, and I just need to get confirmation the council's comfortable with that, so it'd be $75,000 of $138,000 of fund. So I'm just looking to get any feedback, or if I see head nods, that's fine as well, so.
There you go.
That works for everybody, great.
Yes, can I just clarify?
Yeah.
That is not money coming out of the general fund, correct?
That's correct.
It's already been set aside.
That is correct.
And it can only be used for this sort of purpose.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Just for further clarification, it can be used for arts in public places, and now we're switching it to art in public places in the linear park, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the next one I'm going to turn over to our community service director, Amy Brink, to talk about. As you recall, we've done a trial on organic materials in our park, and I'm going to let her talk about that program and what we're asking feedback for this afternoon. So, Ms. Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Hamburg. Good afternoon, Mayor Anstead and honorable city council members. Last year, the city council included use of organic products in the parks as part of their council goals for this fiscal year. Using organic or herbal pesticides in highly sensitive areas such as the parks has been an important topic of discussion for the city council over the last couple of years. In July last year, the city brought on a new landscape services company, BrightView, who we've been working with since last July. When, upon their arrival, we, city staff, asked BrightView to do a sample area with organic products to better understand how they work, what resources would require to use them, and what impact it would have on those resources, including the labor and costs in landscape services. I will back up for a moment and say that rather than diving into using organic products throughout the entire city, we decided to stop and take a moment to understand it and sample an area at one of the parks, and that happened all during the budget process last year. Staff did select the area of Oldagora Park near the playground, adjacent to the creek and opposite the Equestrian Arena, to perform this sample. The test area is displayed in the map up on the screen, and if we could just leave that there for a couple of minutes, that would be great. Staff recently met with BrightView team headed up by Chris Rossin, the account manager, who is actually listening remotely today on the call, to review the results where we go from here. I'm happy to report that we had good results, but we're probably not surprised, right? The process took place over several months, and here is what we learned. We know that the organic herbicides are safer to the applicator, tend to dry faster in the soil, and do not harm pollinators, animals, and humans. However, with certified organic herbicides, more applications are needed and more labor is required to hand-remove weeds to completely remove and prevent from coming back. Next slide, please. An organic maintenance approach reduces toxic pesticides in groundwater, reduces exposure of pesticides to visitors in the park, wildlife-sensitive environmental areas. It also improves healthier soils and improves water conservation. For your consideration today, we have identified a cost of $12,000 to use this organic product approach in two parks, Oldagora and Chumash, both of which sit adjacent to creeks and waterways. There are a couple more items to consider that actually don't include any additional costs but are important, are a very important part of this goal. It's a comprehensive maintenance, a comprehensive organic maintenance program. Organic, sustainable landscape management encourages and supports the systems created by nature, and I know that I'm talking to a very, very educated and schooled council, so I'm just trying to explain it so that the public understands what we're going through. I feel like I'm talking to the, you know, the very educated ones. The goal is to create healthy soil to support healthy plants through a holistic, bottom-up approach. We can accomplish this in a couple of ways with no increased costs, but I have to tell you a quick story. Back in late August, early September, when we were still in the middle of that massive heat wave, drought restrictions were tighter than ever, and we were watering, our watering schedules were reduced, and we were negotiating them like crazy. Where can we take water from here to put to here to keep some of the event center particularly looking flush so that our events could happen on the weekend and we wouldn't notice that we were actually struggling with water? But the event center turf continued to look bright green. I don't know if anyone had an opportunity to go take a look at that. We have no idea why. We thought it was the amount of water we were putting on, and we were doing a really great job. So fast forward to our recent meeting, BrightView informed us that they actually had been using organic fertilizer on the turf, which was a surprise to us. We didn't know they were testing it out. Organic fertilizers are made using low to no sodium, organic materials, organic animal byproducts. These fertilizers are sustainable, which means that they aid the health of the soil organism. They also prevent runoff into our water sources. And it also helps that that particular fertilizer really likes heat, which is why we think that that grass really, there was really no brown spots during, it was almost embarrassing because it looked so beautiful, but we found out that it was because of the organic fertilizer, so we were really, we were really excited about that. We appreciated BrightView taking the lead on this. Again, organic, sustainable maintenance. We also see BrightView implementing small things like recycling leaves, small branches, pieces of plants that fall on the turf. Crews that mow the turf with machines actually pick up the debris, grind it up, push it back out, and it becomes a small composting mechanism. The material is obviously good for the soil. It creates a barrier to keep water in and adds natural nutrients back into the soil, which helps the turf. These small changes in how we approach landscaping, cleaning and caring for the city, will go a long way in creating a healthier, more sustainable environment for our animals, plants, and people who visit the parks. To summarize before you today is a $12,000 budget request to implement organic product maintenance at two of the parks, which includes additional labor hours each month and the difference in costs of the herbicides versus the pesticides. The other ideas, using recycled compost materials, organic fertilizers, those will be incorporated into our plan moving forward at no additional cost. What started as a trial run for organic herbicides resulted in an overall organic maintenance program that will provide the city with a healthier, more sustainable, water-conserving approach to our landscape. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Questions from councilmembers?
Bravo. Let me start by saying, great presentation, and that's really exciting news because I know we've been talking about it. I know all of you, or new members may not know, but this was all brought to our attention by Poison Free Malibu and Carolyn Trossino and a group of moms way back when that were from Mariposa, and their kids were at Sumac Park. So once again, thank you to the public and for coming out and working with us to try and solve the problems that are most important to you. So I think it's really exciting, and I think those are good choices, Chumash and Oldagora because they are close to the creek, and, you know, in the future, the linear park will probably be equally as important, and so, you know, I think that that's really good. So, but $12,000, I was expecting it to be more, so is BrightView just excited about this, or?
BrightView is excited about it. It is $12,000. They were able to, they were just able to work it into the contract. I think the cost of the product is a lot more, and I, and they're able to work it into the contract.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers?
Thank you. I do feel like you're preaching a little bit to the choir here. We're all very excited to hear this. So I have two questions. The first question is, did we get any kind of feedback from the residents in that area that they noticed any difference in weeds or animals or anything different in terms of comments from the community that live around the park?
We have not received any comments, and my only comment to that would be is we usually receive comments when people are not happy, so.
Right.
Although I don't like to make assumptions, I'm going to make the assumption that people are, people are okay.
Or they just didn't notice any difference.
Didn't notice any difference.
Right, okay. And then my next question is, then after, you know, assuming that we moved to two parks, is the idea to eventually roll this out to the parks all across the city that even don't back up to creeks? I mean, you mentioned Sumac Park, and, you know, we have, we have interest in all the parks, so is that the ultimate goal?
That's a great question, Councilmember Lopez, and I was anticipating it being asked, and I think I want to answer that and include the comment about the funding as well because I think when we went out to bid and BrightView bid on it, the large for organics was much larger, but that included the entire city. So we're looking at just two park areas, and I think if we want, my goal with, my goal with this plan is to take baby steps. So let's spend the next year focusing on the two areas that are highly sensitive and the parks that sit next to creeks and waterways. And then I would like to the following year, come back to you during the next budget, budget process and discuss what we, what we found, and if there's anything else that we would like to change moving forward. So I believe that this is part of a longer-term plan for it. I will say, I'm really excited. You know, we work a lot with BrightView, and they've got a lot of really amazing, and I don't want to say aggressive, but assertive approaches to some of this organic, environmentally sustainable, like, products and behavior. So I think we're just seeing the tip of what we can do with this, with this, the new company, so we're excited about it.
Okay, that's fantastic, and I'm a big fan of baby steps, especially, you know, just to test the waters to see if the residents notice any difference, which hopefully it sounds like it's just the same level of service. And I love that it's happening at Chumash, which of course is kind of our signature park when it comes to summer activities. You know, we get a lot of visitors at that park, so I'm very happy to hear it. Thank you.
Great, and I think, just to follow up, I think that one, one little element that we're already seeing is it's going to be that organic fertilizer. Like, they're already starting to mix. They're, we were just talking about it the other day, there's kind of a 50/50 mix of fertilizer happening. We're kind of backing off on regular fertilizer and incorporating organic fertilizer to see what that does. And I think we'll see those types of changes throughout the city, maybe even including medians and interchanges, but we want to, they want to see how it works first before we start doing it across the board. But I will, I want to state again that the fertilizer has no fiscal impact. The cost of the fertilizers are about the same, so there's no fiscal impact to that. It's a good benefit to us without the price increase.
Any other comments?
My, my question was regarding about the role, like, the scope for this, and you answered it, that we're taking baby steps, but, you know, how we monitor this and a rollout, and how we inform in future years residents about this so that maybe they can start implementing these type of things in their, their homes. And like, we have a whole set of data and information that the city has already done, so I'd be interested in revisiting how to get the public engaged in that in a few years. So I think it's really exciting. It's important for our watersheds, too, with the nitrogen going into the creek, so I appreciate the vision that this council had to implement this, so thank you.
I appreciate that. And city manager Hamburg and I have had conversations about that, and I think that we'd like to see a few months of this happening to get the results so that we actually have some good data, and then we can certainly release it to the community and share what we've learned and what we can do. There's a lot that we can do.
Any other councilmembers have comments?
No, just as a follow-up to Councilmember Wolf, are we monitoring the watershed as it enters our city and as it leaves?
I'm actually, I'm actually going to defer to our public works director, Forte, for that one.
I could talk about this forever. We have a coordinated, we have a, what we call a SIMP, it's Coordinated Integrated Monitoring Program, and we do have several sites throughout the city. We do not monitor at every inflow into the city and every exit, but we have a very thorough approach to water quality analysis.
Thank you. Now, I'd just be curious to see what the difference is from before it gets to Chumash and then when it leaves. If, if we could monitor the, just that one section?
I can certainly take a look at our nearest monitoring sites, and if we want to pull some periodic samples outside of our typical monitoring program, I can discuss with our city manager what that may cost and if that's, if that's an approach we'd like to take.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, and I just want to make comment that I'm all for this, so hopefully we gave you enough direction.
Yep, a resounding yes. I like it. All right, we will jump back in, and we'll be starting with our first subcommittee, which will be the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee. And as that gets put back up, we will, I'm just going to highlight, again, we talked about this at the last workshop, just a reminder, these are the items that we will be working on as we kind of just flow into the next fiscal year. We'll be finishing those up in the early half of that, and most of those. And then I will move to the next slide, which is the proposed goals, which you've been probably waiting for. So the first one is, was review of commercial cannabis, and I will let each subcommittee discuss theirs, but I'll just try to give a brief overview. The discussion revolved around making sure that we do a public outreach and education process first before really looking to implement any type of change in our, in our ordinances or policies. And so the cost of $55,000 includes a postcard survey with like a, it'll be a link or a QR code to take a survey, and then to educate the public on that, and then to find out if, if the community is supportive of moving forward with that, and that'll come, the results will come back to the council. The next goal that's recommended is to review the penalties for removal of protected trees, and just generally, this is looking at, our code right now maybe doesn't have some of the details that would be helpful in the enforcement of issues that we've looked at, and we've got quite a few cases right now that we're dealing with, and so the subcommittee recommended that the staff review that for the first fiscal year and the second fiscal year, take that information and utilize that with a consultant to update our ordinance in those penalties. And then the third one, and the reason this has a star next to it, is there was a recommendation to look at a dark skies ordinance. The subcommittee discussed this. They were very supportive of the idea and tried to look for the areas that would be most impacted by lighting without having a longer and more costly process, and the recommendation that came out of that was to review wildlife migration routes and sensitive environmental areas with a cost of $20,000 for consultant to do an initial study. With that, I will allow the subcommittee, if they want to make any comments or if there's any questions from the council on any of these items.
Thank you. Yes, it was a fantastic conversation in our subcommittee meeting with a lot to go over. Back to the whole idea of baby steps that Ms. Brink was commenting, that's how we thought that we should approach the dark sky ordinance because it's extremely complicated and enforcement and rollout would be just a massive undertaking, so we thought we would kind of take that baby step and try to look into the more sensitive areas. The anti-camping ordinance, we, we chose to pass on just because of the legal challenges with that, which we can talk about if anyone has questions. And then the drought-tolerant landscape plans, we also, there's, there's a lot of that out there. So the things that we focused on were the cannabis commercial possibility. Again, it was, it's nothing that we're saying we should or shouldn't do, just due to some of the community outreach we've had, just doing a real full public outreach to see what it is that our residents want and are comfortable with. And then, of course, the tree species, which we've heard for years have been burdensome for some, so we wanted to look at that as well, and I don't know if Councilmember Wolf, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'm going to echo what you say but pepper in my own take on it. And so with, with the outdoor lighting ordinance, it's something I would love to see in the city, but it's just not, we didn't feel that it was in the realm of possibility to get something passed and then to be able to enforce that. There was a few other community issues that we, we considered, but we wanted to take kind of a surgical approach. So what can we get the most bang for our buck, especially with wildlife migration paths in sensitive ecological areas, to kind of look at that and where it can be enforceable. So I, I appreciate where we came out on that with reviewing sensitive areas. For the out, anti-camping ordinance, this was a really interesting one, but it, it's unenforceable, and I believe I can use the term unconstitutional. I will take that back. Well, there, we wouldn't be able to enforce it for a few reasons. There was the Boise decision, the Ninth Circuit, and on top of, we were told that Agora Hills does not have anywhere, we don't have permanent or shelter where we could send folks. So if we said, the only way legally, and it's very simplified, is to tell people you can't camp here, is to have somewhere to send them, and we just don't have that. So this is not enforceable. Something that residents have talked about, but for right now, we just don't have the capability. And for the drought-tolerant landscaping, this sounds like a no-brainer and something, of course, we'd want to do, but there's so many other of these programs already going on. I know Valerie's working on something, different agencies around here are working on kind of over-the-counter on, uh, kind of over the counter drought tolerant, uh, plans. And so we didn't think that it needed this, uh, special consideration because it's already in the works. And so that concludes my comments on our land use economic subcommittee decisions.
Any questions from the?
I would just like to say, when I was at the, um, training session for council members with the League of California Cities, several council members that I spoke to, they have legal cannabis sales in their cities and they're saying it really is a good revenue source for the cities. So I think it's important that we look at it from that point of view.
And, uh, Councilmember Sylvester, uh, I, I was there with you and those comments informed a lot of my, uh, decision-making process also.
Thank you.
So if we can go back to, I'm still on that first, uh, existing work plan for the affordable housing planning and public outreach only, what exactly is that?
That would be, um, so we are reaching a point where we need to utilize some of our affordable housing funds or, um, potentially give them to another agency, being the state. And so what we would do is utilize those funds to go out and meet with the community onsite and talk about, uh, potentially what could go there, how we could preserve the hillside and, um, and the trees and the, uh, type of number of units and all that type of, you know, information to them.
Okay, so we're talking about that specific property?
Yeah.
The specific property over on Driver?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then, um, I see that the oak tree ordinance got put off to 2024, 2025. Was there a reason?
Yeah, so the, we are, um, the major concern was to bring back the, um, the cost to residents. So we're going to bring that back this fiscal year. So that'll be before you, um, pretty shortly. I will just say our oak tree ordinance is very complicated. And so there's, um, quite a bit of information that we need to gather even more than we originally estimated. Um, so we were in the process of doing that. Um, we just believe it's going to take a little bit longer, um, to get to that.
Okay, would we be making a decision on the penalties without looking at an ordinance first?
Well, so, um, yes, and it, because there are, there is, um, language in the existing code that addresses if someone cuts or illegally trims without a permit or removes a, a protected tree. So, um, that'll help clarify that and then we'll help clarify, um, because the other, part of the other oak tree ordinance code deals with new development and how, um, how you deal with oak trees through that as well.
So we wouldn't be doing it in two parts? Like we wouldn't change the penalty part? That would not come to us and change the penalty part without having seen the full ordinance?
If, if you prefer that we do that, we can.
No, I don't. I think it should all be one thing. And that's, I just wanted to make sure that that's the way we're looking at it.
They, they are separate items now, but we can, we can look at that and I can bring that back to the council of, if, if that's something, if you, it'd like those to coincide. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it, to me, it seems like I can't really, um, support or oppose changing the penalty phase of people not having a permit and cutting, um, you know, cutting down oak trees of a certain size without knowing what our oak tree ordinance is going to be. So for me, it seems like it should all be one. I don't care if you work on them in two different things, but I wouldn't want to come, have the penalties portion of the ordinance come to us, us make a decision on that and then move into maybe a year or two later, coming up with an ordinance. That's just my feeling on it. Um, but you can work on them whichever way you want. I just think it should, you know, maybe come with us some ideas, but not the actual. Because the penalty stage is so important, but it only goes, it's only important once we have an oak tree ordinance. That's, that's the way I feel about it. I don't know if anyone else has anything else on that. So, um, on the commercial cannabis, I would, you know, just like to, I'm not on the committee that would be dealing with that, but I know that I've seen many of the surveys that have gone out. And usually I'm taking the survey and, so if I could, I would like, I think it's really important that we review that survey and postcard because I think that there's probably half of our community does not want a postcard coming to their house with a big green cross on it. You know, or something like that, that's like cannabis or the cannabis leaf. I mean, I know they all know about it, but if they have kids at home, I'm not sure that they would like that. So I think we want it, I, I'm not sure how or we do that and the survey companies will know, but I'd sure like to see it before it goes out to the community.
Okay, absolutely. We can bring that back to the entire council. It's similar to past surveys we've done, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
Can, can I just comment that, uh, we wanted to bring it back to the full council before, we, that was a goal, was that anything that would be sent out would be reviewed and discussed by the full council?
Great, thank you. And then, uh, for, you know, I, for the, um, dark skies ordinance. So I did some research on dark sky ordinances and I worked with staff to find out exactly what we have. And a lot of what we have would be in a dark skies ordinance called dark skies ordinance, but it's, a lot of it's already there. So I would just ask that we take a look at, for example, our ordinance in section 9288.2 says, "For single-family residential development, um, quote, 'All exterior light shall be directed down and away from adjacent property.'" So I'm sure that you have been around town in the last, I'd say, two, two and a half years, that there is a new type of lighting that does not do that. And so I don't know, um, so it's not being enforced. So that, I would like to be taking a look at, um, we don't necessarily need to call it a dark skies ordinance, um, but we have things on the books that I would sure like to see enforced.
And that's what we discussed. I mean, we basically said that a lot of the things that are important to us are already in our ordinance. So we didn't, we didn't feel, you know, the need to go into so deep of a larger ordinance and we do have a lot of that. So if it's an enforcement issue,
Right.
then that's an enforcement issue. That's not really a budget issue.
Um, is enforcement a budget? Is that why we're not enforcing it?
I, I, I think we'd need to take a look at that. I, I believe we have a, maybe a different viewpoint of what's, what's to be enforced there. But if, if we're doing nighttime enforcement, I do need to be, you know, just put out there that we don't have employees that work on evenings and, and weekends. So that would definitely change, um, you know, that position. We, we would probably need to add a position in order.
Because I just, you know, in the dark sky ordinance research I did, I mean, they talk about protecting and reclaiming the ability to view the night sky and stars, greater tranquility and maintenance of the rural ambiance, uh, minimize light protection by protecting against direct glare and excessive lighting, um, et cetera, et cetera. And so the new lighting that seems to be going on residentially, um, and is, you know, even now, some of our restaurants are doing it, they are just light bulbs, strong light bulbs. I'm not saying they don't look nice. They, you know, they look professional. I think I showed you one somewhere. And they're just light bulbs. And so the glare is just shooting out into the sky. And, um, you know, that's, I don't think that's Agora Hills. And I don't think that that's what people want. And if you live next door to that, um, you know, and it's not allowed, I think that it's something that we need to look at.
Well, to clarify, we, we do look at the commercial areas, but I, I was referring to residential.
This is residential?
Yeah, okay. So the, the commercial we do, we go out, so we, we probably would need to have a, a further conversation if that's something you want to explore to enforce residential and how we.
I mean, the, the subcommittee did discuss that,
Yeah.
you know, and, and we weren't recommending it because we, we didn't, we didn't see that there was any widespread complaints about it in our neighborhoods. I mean, people, for example, in Morrison Ranch, they walk around all night. They like it a little bit brighter than in Old Agora, say, where there's more of that. Maybe it's an unofficial ordinance or that they have for dark skies there. So we just felt it was more of an enforcement issue than an ordinance issue. Now, if we have to hire an additional, um, staff, then, you know, I would say we can leave that to you, but, and your team, but we didn't feel that moving it into, we just felt that it would be better addressed as enforcement when we already have a baseline in our, our guidelines and we're not really seeing, um, it at the, at the residential level. Have you gotten, I mean, I haven't gotten a single complaint in the five years I've been on the council.
People know to complain to me if.
So how many complaints do you get?
A couple.
Yeah, so it's not widespread.
But it is getting more widespread. And I'm just here to say that I don't think that's Agora Hills. I think that we have always appreciated dark skies. And if we're not going to enforce it, then why can't somebody in Old Agora? We have gotten complaints on the Airbnbs have that kind of lighting and there's no enforcement. Now, if it's an Airbnb, there is a manner to enforce it now. But I just think it's something that we need to look at because, um, you know, I know I'm sensitive to, to the, you know, I like the dark skies and I don't like it being so lit up. And I'm very sensitive to when I'm driving around the streets and I'm seeing it more and more. And I just saw two restaurants now are doing it. You know, we had one restaurant doing it for about two years. Now we've got probably a half a dozen that are doing it. And, you know, if the lights are going off at a certain time, that's not a problem. But if we're talking about, you know, preserving wildlife and preserving dark skies, I think it's something that we do need to look at. And I agree with you, it may not be an ordinance issue, um, but I don't think that we should walk away from at least discussing as part of budget, um, enforcement, you know, I mean, that's even commercial and it's not downward.
Are you talking about string lights though? Because people like string lights. I know not everyone, I know you don't like string lights, but some people really like the ambiance of string lights at a restaurant.
Yeah, but that's not what our, that's not allowed in our standards and our ordinances, the way I'm reading it, because it's just shooting out into the sky. So, you know, it's.
But you said we are enforcing it commercially.
Well, are we?
We do. There's, there's a period of where holiday lights are allowed up. And I can have our Community Development Director come up and address some of it too.
Hello, I'm Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. So the regulations pertain to light fixtures. And the light fixtures would be the pack lights that are on the side of the building, the house lights, those types of lights. We don't regulate Christmas lights other than Christmas lights have to come down. Those string lights are permissible because they're low voltage. They don't require plumbing, uh, a permit, an electrical permit. So people are allowed to use them at their discretion. The ordinance's intention was not to regulate the string lights, but if we, if we decide, if you decide you want to regulate those and outlaw those, we can start issuing notices of violation wherever we see them. But it would also be the same for any kind of those types of lights. Christmas lights would no longer be permissible. Those lights would no longer, the accent lights that people have in their backyards no longer permissible because we would have no way of saying this string light is acceptable and that string light is not.
Well, uh, uh, thank you for that. So, so really we, they're allowed.
They are allowed.
They shoot out light into the sky.
The, they are allowed. They aren't regulated. When the ordinance was drafted, it was drafted to protect against people shooting spotlights on the side of their houses, people putting, installing light poles on the side of their property. So you would have to face it downward or use, um, lighting that tracks your driveway. It was intended so that you didn't have bright lights that way. It was not intended to regulate the patio lights that people choose to put up. Those aren't regulated. You can buy those anywhere, any day, and it doesn't require a permit. You plug them in and you unplug them, much like we do Christmas lights. But when holiday lights go up, we do have a requirement that they come down, but these accent lights on patios, Nate's right, we would need to have somebody that patrolled all night, every night, just telling people to unplug their patio lights.
So what I'm talking about is not on the patio. They're stringing them up in the sky.
The ones that I'm thinking of are the individual string lights with the light bulbs and they use them as accent lighting in non-residential developments. And people string them across their, their backyards to provide ambient light in their backyards. Those we don't regulate because those don't require a permit. But the pack lights that you would put on your house would require an electrical permit and those we require to be downward facing and fully screened. But if it's your, if, if it's your desire to say, no string lights in the city, we can do that. It just would pose, I think, issues at, at the holiday season. So we would ask that you come up with standards that would be clear so that when we receive complaints about enforcing, that we can point to where and why we're enforcing it.
Well, for example, with Christmas lights, we could still have them. We just, you'd have to, they would be permissible from November 15th to January 15th.
And that's how we enforce that right now. But the accent lights in the backyards, we, we don't do proactive enforcement. So if we, if people are reaching out to you, have them reach out to us so that at least we know where they are. Because I checked and we, I checked with Trinise to see how many complaints we get on lights and we truly don't get that many. The last time we got a complaint was when the, uh, senior care facility lined their roof line with lights. And based on a complaint, we had them remove the lights. And that was, that was really hard. They were, they were not pleased with us, but we got them to turn the lights off and we got them to take them down. But their argument and pushback for the lights that are lower, not on the roof line, in the space is that it creates, it creates a look and feel that their residents enjoy and it allows them to enjoy being outside at night. And so we don't regulate those, so we didn't ask them to take those down. But if we are going to start regulating them, I just ask for clear, um, clear provisions so that we don't get sideways with, uh, when you get complaints, you want to know why we're enforcing. I want them to understand it.
So the complaints that I've gotten are people who live next door to people who have those lights that are on, you know, all night long, in the middle of the night.
And what the, some, the, some committee suggested is that we ask people when posed with that, to put them on timers so that the lights could go off, much like we do the short-term rentals. And if that's a thing you wanted to put into the standards, um, we would enforce that. But right now, we just don't enforce those types of lights.
Okay. Well, I would support having us look at that, putting it on timers or doing something like that. Because, um, you know, again, I don't think it's Agora Hills to have every, you know, to have people just lighting up their houses and their restaurants and not turning them off. You know, like I said, if you're having a party, whatever you're doing, it's fair enough. But at some point, the light should be coming off so that, um, you know, the rest of the people in the community can have dark skies.
I, I, I completely agree with everything you're saying. And the study just came out, how important the night sky is, now we've lost our connection to it. And also, we're in a prime spot in the Pacific Flyway. Um, but for my, and I came into it with the same, uh, thoughts that you have, but I think what it comes down to is the enforcement. And so I, I don't know, the meaning, I, we would have to move things around in order to, um, be in a place where we are able to enforce it. It just sounds like it's unenforceable.
Well, you know, a lot of the ways that we enforce things in the history of Agora Hills is complaint-based. So for example, neighbors in Liberty Canyon complained about the size of a truck that was parked on the street. And so then the city went out and enforced it. And that way, we weren't, we don't have people driving up and down the streets looking for motorhomes, but neighbors can complain about motorhomes on the street or in the driveways or trailers or, um, jet skis, all that kind of stuff. And I think there was even some allowance at some point during summer months that, you know, we didn't run out and force it on day one. But if, if neighbors complain about it, then that's the way the city would go out.
Well, we were trying to be very pragmatic with the approach in that, number one, um, just, I, I just don't see that it's as widespread of a problem for many people. I think they like their string lights, they like their backyard nights, especially, you know, they, they like to spend time in their outdoor spaces. Um, number two, it's, it would be nearly impossible to enforce because even if we did get a complaint, you know, you're sending someone out there at 11 o'clock at night on a, on a weeknight? I mean, you, you know, you, you have to go and have someone go out there in the evening. So then it becomes a huge cost. And so, again, back to what we did recommend was, we thought it was win-win to be able to try to test this in the more sensitive areas that back up to wildlife. Because, you know, I agree with you and when you and I were both on the same page about the blaring, glaring lights on Agora Road that first went in and it's right there next to the mountain and we know it affects wildlife and, you know, we're, we're, we're very sensitive to that. But rather than rolling this out on a citywide basis, which I think, I personally think the residents, I think that would backfire. I think the residents would come back and say, you can't tell me I can't have string lights at 11 o'clock at night if I want to sit out on my backyard at 11 o'clock at night. If it, you know, um, I, I don't know. I'm guessing. I think that the neighbors would have, uh, something to say about that. I think that the neighbors would have something to say about that. So our goal was to try it, baby steps in the areas that are the most sensitive, backed up to the hills, backed up to the creeks. You know, we have quite a bit of the, of residents' homes that do back up to sensitive spaces. And so that's kind of what we were looking at.
And how will we enforce that?
Well, that's, it'd be the same thing. It's the same problem.
Yeah, exactly.
But, you know, but a small, but why not, why would you take on that issue on a citywide basis before testing it in a smaller subsample?
You know, it's, it's hard to say, except for that I think that it is becoming more and more, there's more and more lights. And I know that some people enjoy it and some people don't. And, you know, I'm not sure how to answer that, but I'm just saying, you know, if you're going to try and, somebody's still going to have to go out and it's still going to cost money and that person's going to have to still go out to deal with the complaints of the SEA areas or along the creeks. And that's going to be Morrison. And it's going to also be Old Agoura. And so you're saying, I mean, so it's going to affect a lot of the homeowners already. And so then it becomes even more tricky of how we enforce because now we...
So what are you saying then? I, I guess I don't understand, like, if, can we enforce it or can't we? I think it's going to be very hard.
I think it's enforcement by complaint. So my point is, is that if it's going to be enforcement by complaint, why don't we have some standards? We've got some good language in here that we're not enforcing, or we, it sounds like we are enforcing, because I'm misreading the language. But that, you know, if we're going to, whatever you come up with for that's going to be in the Morrison homes that back up to the creek, or the Old Agoura homes that back up to the creek, or anything that's near an SEA area or near open space, why can't that be the same regulation everywhere, whatever that is? Whatever we come together and decide this is what we think is a good reasonable approach to protect the lighting in these areas, why can't we look at that as for, for all of Agoura Hills? Because we're going to have the same enforcement issues.
Well, I think that someone who lives across the street from Sumac or Willow or something like that is a, is a totally different experience than someone who lives at the top of, you know, Fountainwood or Morrison and backs up. So, you know, personally, if we are going to go forward and try to do a citywide, stronger light ordinance than we already have, I would want to go back to that survey and the postcard and see if people really want it. And that would be the budget issue. And I, I don't think it's as pressing as some of the other things, because like I said, I, I don't, I don't see it being a problem in the city. But I wouldn't want to do anything across citywide without confirming that our residents really want that. I would still go back to enforcing our, trying to figure out how we can better enforce our existing ordinance.
And I'm okay with looking at that. And I know we do need to move on, but I'm okay with looking at, what do we need to do? Well, you know, if, if we're, this isn't being enforced because it's not, I'm, I didn't read the ordinance language correctly, that it doesn't apply to string lights. And I'm guessing if you don't need a permit, then you can put up all the string lights you want. And so I guess, you know, I come back to that, I think we need some sort of an ordinance to deal with that.
Can I make actually a proposal is, that's on here already, is the postcard survey? Could we include a question?
Well, we did, we did a survey, and that reminds me, that was a survey that we did not look at. I don't think we looked at that before it went out on the lighting. I don't, because when you read, I'm sorry, strike that. The survey I didn't see was the sign survey before it went out. But that's okay. And so, you know, I don't want, I don't want to dwell on this, but, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, there's five of us and we can vote on it. And if you guys don't care about dark skies, or you're comfortable with, you're comfortable with whatever we have now, which is nothing really residential, other than fixtures that need a permit, if you're comfortable with that, then let's, you know, then I, it's four to one, or three to two, or whatever it is. If you want to take a look at what we can be doing, short of necessarily maybe a dark skies ordinance by that name, but some way to control, you know, string lighting, I guess that's the name for it, is some sort of standards on string lighting, I would encourage that. But if that's not what the council wants to do, then we can move on.
Can I ask a question of Candace? Legally, we have security issues now in the city. A lot of people want lights in their backyards for security reasons. So if we tried to regulate lighting around houses, would we run into legal issues with people saying, you know, that it's affecting their security?
Unfortunately, this is the first time this issue has been brought to my attention, so I haven't researched the issue. I'm sure there are certain things that you could conceivably do under the city's police power. The issue is enforcement. The issue is going to be financial and whether you're able to, the council's willing and able to hire staff to do evening code enforcement.
Actually, my question was, could homeowners sue the city because they're saying, "You're taking away my security rights"?
I, yeah, I'd have to look at that.
I think that discussion, I, I want to go back to just making sure, because I threw that out there as, I mean, there's not a way that we could add a question onto the cannabis survey?
No, they're two different topics.
Add a question about lighting on it?
No, they're two different topics.
Yeah.
Can't be a general survey?
No.
Is that a just a cannabis survey? Okay.
Cannabis is too big of a topic to be throwing in.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. All right. So I guess, Mayor Protem, Luckily Webber, do you want us to vote on whether we want to relook back at the dark skies ordinance? Is that what you would like?
Yes. I mean, you know, if, maybe it goes back to the committee, I don't know if there's time or not, but just to kind of consider, well, I, I can hear how one council member feels about it. So I don't even know if you need to take the time for it to go back to the committee. But, you know, I, I think it's something that's important to, to the city and for the future of the city. And I would like to see some sort of standards or regulations on string lighting. I don't think they should be on all night. And, you know, and I know that means enforcement, but we're going to have the same enforcement. That same person, or complaint base, is going to be the person who's going to enforce the people in Morrison who back up to the creek. Or who are going to be in Old Agoura. And those homes that back up to the creek. And we've come up with something that seems to be, you know, with the Airbnbs. So it just seems to me that if we're creative and we kind of sit down and think about it, and maybe the best answer is for staff to come back with something and then, you know, without, you know, spending a lot of money and see what they can come up with that's similar, because I always thought what we did with the Airbnbs was good. Of course, the residents can complain to somebody on the spot.
So it sounds like you want to make a motion to revisit the dark skies ordinance and have it as a priority.
Well, Nate, how would that work? Because, you know, I, I want to clarify, I'm not against dark skies. I think that you know that. So I just want to make sure that you know that. I also want to make it clear that if we're hiring someone that's a huge salary, that, you know, people reach out to me far more about security. People reach out to me about, you know, I, I mean, we have communications, we have, there's a lot of different, if we're hiring people, then we have to say, is this, you know, if we hire a body, is this, is this the extra body that we're in agreement is the most pressing, you know, human resource need that we have?
And I agree with you. I just think that it's all, all the complaints now are, it's complaint-based. That's what people do.
And I don't see the complaints. I, I've never gotten one complaint about night lighting. I do my, my newsletter every month and I don't want to argue with you.
No, 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 I don't either. But I'm just saying, no, other ordinances, it's complaint-based.
I know.
So this would be a complaint-based issue. If it bothered someone that their neighbor had their lights on all night, they would be able to call the city and the city would be able to do something.
But we could do that now. I had one complaint, yes, we, I had one complaint when I was campaigning of a commercial area that had its, its lights on all night. And we addressed it and it was taken care of. So we can enforce it. We have...
Could I suggest to you, we have the C Click Fix? And, I mean, if somebody is, has a concern about lighting, they could report it through that. And then that wouldn't require city staff, you know, initially to go out. And then we could contact the homeowner and maybe in a nice way suggest that they, you know, turn their lights off at a certain time. But we have that app already there and, you know, our residents could use that.
If I may, and I'm, I'm not picking a side here by any means, but just to clarify how this operationally has to work from my perspective is, complaint-based on, on code enforcement is, I have a code enforcement officer during the weekdays, this available to respond directly to that or additional staff. I can't expect staff that doesn't work evenings and weekends to, to be ready to come out at a beck and call on that. So I would, we would literally need to have a person that was scheduled during those time periods. And it's, it's really just the hours that it occurs, right? That's, that's really operationally how it, I believe it would have to work. So it would, it would probably be more someone having to actually do that work. And we need to find additional work when there's not lighting issues for them during the evening to do as well. But that's just, just so we understand, I mean, even the C Click Fix, it, it goes directly to a staff member, but if they're at home at 10:00 PM at night, they're probably not seeing that item and it wouldn't be addressed.
No, I meant that they would, that they would then follow up during the day with the homeowner.
Yeah. So as long as that expectation...
I think a soft approach may be all that's needed.
And that's what I think we do with complaint-based things, like when someone has a motor home. Staff might go out there, the motor home's not there that day. And then they just, you know, I mean, somebody takes a picture of it and sends it in and then we know it's there and we try and work with the homeowner. That's my understanding. I think it's been a few years, but, you know, with the motor homes and trailers and jet skis and all of that. So, you know, I, I don't want to dwell on this and I, and I don't really, you know, I don't really have a motion. I mean, I, I would like to see if staff can come up. I guess my motion would be that to have staff take a look at is, do we have any possibilities? What would it take, you know, to have some sort of standards about string lights in the residential area primarily? And, but, you know, that's, I think it's worth looking at. I think it's worth trying to figure this out before it becomes really abundant in the area.
So functionally, what that would mean is if there was a motion, then we would table this and this would come back to the committee with staff recommendation? Is that, and I'm just, my one fear is that staff will say the same thing that was said last time and that I was just, we got a lot of information about the enforceability and some what other cities have done. You know, Malibu is one of the most far-reaching dark sky ordinance, but it's not really even enforceable. And so they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on that and there's not a lot of benefit. So my, just one concern is that staff will come back with that same answer, or the same information. But I, I, so actually, those are questions. So is that what would happen? Is if a motion was made, then it would go back to...
I think we should, if possible, get direction on what the subcommittee recommendation was. Do you want, does the council want to move forward with that item? If you'd like us to return the subcommittee, we, we can try to do that fairly quickly so that we can get the budget book together. But the hope was to leave with, with your goals outlined tonight, but it doesn't mean that you can't extend that if you'd like to.
I mean, from a subcommittee point of view, it's, it's myself and Councilmember Wolf, you know, rather than spend time on this, I'm, I'm just going to say that I think residents like string lights. I don't think they're out of control. And so I, I, it would end up coming back here anyway, because we, we would either agree or we'd be split. And so I just want to make my, my statement again that, you know, I, I just don't see this as a, as a widespread problem yet. And I, I think that residents would be upset by it. So that's, that's why, you know, I go back to what we were either going to try this out on the edges and see if we can enforce it, or we could pull it all together. I'm, I'm fine with either one of those, because I just can't see how we could get a, a staff member's salary in on this one. That's just not something I would recommend.
So then, if we wouldn't, if it's not complaint-based and we'd have to have a staff member, even if it's abutting a creek, are you saying you want to just pull the whole thing? Because I would support what the subcommittees come up with and I would just hope that, you know, it's going to be the same thing. If the Morrison Ranch people and the Old Agoura people, so we could start with that, if they put up the string lights and they leave them up 24 hours a day or all night long, somebody's going to have to enforce that.
Well, that was our goal of trying to kind of meet the middle ground. Because what we saw in Malibu and some of the other cities that had these dark sky ordinances, they were huge undertakings that cost, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and were not able to be enforced. This was our attempt to try it out on a small subset of our city and it can still be complaint-based. We could, you know, ask our staff to figure out how we could enforce it. I mean, like I said, I don't see this as a problem, so I would have no problem pulling it and just saying, "Look, our ordinance is, is fine as it is. We just need to figure out a better enforcement mechanism." That is kind of where I personally would go. But this was our attempt to kind of meet it halfway, to, to, to try to at least affect the most sensitive areas. So I'm fine with either one of those, because like I said, I, I would be fine with figuring out better enforceability of what we have. But this was our attempt to kind of meet a little bit of that more sensitive space, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, I would say, you know, if this is what, you know, if that's what the committee wants to do, I mean, I would rather be doing something rather than nothing. I mean, I would hate to see that the homes over in Liberty Canyon and off of Agoura Road all of a sudden start doing string lighting and we're putting up $100 million wildlife crossings. So I think that, you know, the SEA areas and the, the, for, you know, this is strictly for wildlife, but that's going to affect quite a few homes in Agoura that are up against creeks. So I, you know, I would say I'd rather have that than nothing.
And that, I mean, that was our, my thought. I mean, I'm very sensitive, especially for the wildlife aspect to it. And so this was like an idea to maybe surgically view this in a much smaller lens that's within the realm of enforcement. So I mean, that's kind of what we were, we were looking at.
Well, then if that's what, if that's what the full council wants, then I'm, I'm a team player, but I would rather see something than nothing. Because I do think that, I, I do think we're headed into being a very lit-up city.
Thank you. I think that's where, so are we all in agreement with the three priorities that are listed under the lean use? And it sounds like we are. Yep.
I hear Jeremy and I thought we were going to have this big old discussion on cannabis and here it was all...
All right. Next.
Well, we're not ruling one way or the other on cannabis.
Exactly.
We're just deciding to do a survey.
Exactly, exactly. But we were ready to have that full conversation and make sure everybody knew that we were not going, wait, this was just a initial step. We had no idea that this was, that was the easy one.
Well, I will move on to our next subcommittee as, to try to move us forward here. The Environmental Responsibility Subcommittee, two goals that are recommended, remove and replace non-native trees. We've looked at the area adjacent to Old Agoura Park and looked for more tree planting opportunities. So that's $50,000 in, in both years as proposed. I just also want to highlight, in our trips to Sacramento and Washington DC, it was recommended that we become a Tree City USA. Staff has already looked into that. This will be part of that if this goal is continued, so that we'll be eligible for more grants. We were, we're told that's a better route to go. So, great. If you're okay with that. And the second one is the, to, to look at a ban on styrofoam and single-use plastic utensils, $50,000 for consultant in the first year, and then implementation and enforcement of $15,000 in the second year. And we, this would be working with our solid waste solutions, who has a real big, a good background in this area.
Can I just ask something about the consultant fees? Are they, are they going to sort of, because I noticed that County of LA last year passed an, an ordinance 12.86, which bans styrofoam and single-use plastics. So can't we just take what someone else has already created and use it? I mean, because 50,000, I mean, where, where are they starting from, is my question?
Their ban was in the unincorporated parts. So I think that, that's the difference. And I, you're, you're right, though, that is a foundation. A lot of the other cities have, we're not the first, we're, I think in the Cano Valley we are, but other cities have, have, have done it. So I think we have that foundation.
Yes, I was just questioning...
But your question is, why is it 50,000?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't...
If I could too, that, that was taking into consideration of talking to our business community, the chamber, so that there's time and effort that the consultant would need to do outreach. And that's, that's probably a good chunk of your, the cost there, to get that feedback so that we have something that is, is not detrimental to some of our small businesses and that, you know, to their... small businesses and, you know, to their operations.
I have a question. So the, when you say you banning started from a single use, this is just, this is from businesses. What, who is, who is subject to this ban?
The conversations revolved around the business.
Right. I mean, you can't, you can't regulate any more than that, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And then, can I ask a question about the goals not recommended, or not yet? Are we?
Sure, we can, we can move into that if that's another question.
Yeah, just the ordinance to ban gas leaf blowers. We had brought that up, I think it was two years ago? I don't think it was four years ago. I think it was two years ago. And we had decided not to go down that road, because there was going to be state legislation. And then, nothing happened. And then I saw Westlake did it. So can you give us an update on what is the state doing? What is Westlake doing? And why did we choose not to go that route? Because I think that's a big thing for our climate action and adaptation plan, is, is using gas blowers.
So if I could start with the state, the state has banned the sale of, of, of gas leaf blowers or the equipment, starting in January of 2024. And I can, our deputy city manager, Lewis Slay, can speak to the Westlake program in more detail.
Yes, right now, Westlake has, has their ordinance in place. I did speak with a staff person, asked about post-activity. Right now, what they are doing is, it is complaint-driven, but they are getting pushback from the businesses. A lot of it is, okay, if you ban that, you're going to increase my costs, because of my contractors coming back and telling me that this is going to cost me more dollars. He says they're, Westlake's kind of taking it slow. It is, it is a reactive ordinance. It's not proactive. But in speaking with the staff, at least at this moment, they're not really enforcing. They're kind of just sitting back, because they are taking a lot of pushback from the community on it.
And if I can add to that, being on the subcommittee, three guesses of what one of the top reasons was that we did not move forward. We can't enforce it.
Enforce it.
Exactly. Because if somebody reports it, then the person using the gas leaf blower could be gone in five minutes. We also were sensitive to the, you know, for a lot of the gas leaf blowers are being used by gardeners in our community. And there was, you know, it's, it's a really tricky thing, because they have electric ones, but then you have to have a place where the gardeners can recharge them, you know, for their livelihood, to go from home to home to home. And it doesn't last all that long. So at best, you can get one home. Sometimes you might not even be able to get a second home. So it became very complicated, and we did look at it like, the number one thing is that, you know, the state law has been passed, that there's going to be no sales. It's a few years off. So, and these things could last for 10 years. So we're probably looking at that if somebody bought a brand new gas one in 2020, it could last them till 2030. But you need some infrastructure so that people can come recharge. You know, there's battery packs, and, you know, there's a couple of different kinds, but none of them, none of them are great. And so they all need some more work. And so we kind of just thought, let's, let, you know, let's table it for this year. And I guess we kind of looked at it like, hopefully, the state's going to be moving forward with this, and there's going to be a natural progression, and there's going to be technology. Because everybody seems to be really sensitive about the air pollution that's caused. And we got some of the data at our subcommittee meeting. And, you know, it's, it's pretty bad stuff that's going into the air. And so, but we just can't figure out, how do you really enforce that? And how do you help disadvantaged communities unless, not disadvantaged, you know, people that, you know, are working in our communities, who may not have the money to go buy one of these heavy-duty battery-pack leaf blowers? And could we give grants? And then it became a huge budget issue. And so we decided that we would table it. And, you know, I would encourage future councils, keep taking a look at it.
Yeah.
You know, keep talking about it every budget cycle, so that we're on top of it, and we're looking at it and trying to figure out, you know, I, I feel comfortable that the state's going to figure this out. And then we, you know, we'll be able to fall in line. But I did say that about styrofoam and single-use plastics, you know, five or six years ago, and the state really hasn't, you know, pulled through on that either. So I would just encourage, you know, our councils to keep, keep looking at it. And maybe one day, we can figure out a way to help the people who are, you know, using them.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And thank you, Mr. Slay. That's important to know as well. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So that will close out our Environmental Responsibility Subcommittee, if there's more questions on that. And then we'll move to our Public Works Subcommittee. Very quickly, you're aware of our linear park. We are going to push up the design of the Hawk Crossings, and we'll have those completed in, the design completed in July. And then we'll move into the recommended goals. And so with that, we have the bikeway improvements. The recommendation is $50,000 each year. That is out of the special funds that can only be used on transportation roadway. And then we'd also utilize any grant funds we were, we can, can be awarded. The second was to review the, the light poles on the Race Adobe Bridge. The recommendation of the Subcommittee was to do a photometric study of the light fixtures. And that really is to understand the amount of light that's coming out, and how many fixtures, if we were to place those, could we go with a smaller number of fixtures? That costs us $25,000. And then if we are to replace them, because we don't know exactly at this point what that is, there was a discussion about up to $250,000 on those, if we need to replace all of those. And Caltrans is on board with that. The next one, there was a request to look at, as you may recall, from a community member and a group, to look at a sound wall. The feedback we received is that could be problematic for the wildlife crossing, because of sound reflection and a couple other things. What we did come up with, and I want to credit staff for being creative, is, is a tree wall, or planting of landscaping, to try to screen and reduce some of that noise impact on the residents there. So we would look for that in the recommendation, to seek grant funding, to see if that's a possibility. And the last item is to consider naturalizing the creeks and waterways. And so there was a recommendation to utilize $50,000 to do an assessment study on that, and then bring that back to the council for future consideration in, in goals and budgeting.
Can I ask a question about the creeks and waterways? Is that, is that all, like throughout the city? Looking at that assessment throughout the city, so including behind Vons, in Liberty Canyon, along Agora Road, everywhere that's kind of cemented over?
You're correct, yes.
That's fantastic. Okay, thank you.
And one of the reasons that, you know, we, we like that idea is because you never know in the future, like when there's going to be money for creek naturalization again. And when there is, if we already have a plan, we can go.
Shovel ready.
Hey, we've got $100,000, you know, that, we can do this little bit. $100,000 is not realistic, but we have a million dollars. You know, get a grant for a million dollars, and we can, you know, fix this one little area of waterway. And just kind of, if we have to do it piecemeal, you know, that at least we'll have a plan in place of what needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Sorry.
No, you go ahead. Sorry, council member.
The light, the lights on the Race Adobe Bridge, my husband hates them. And I think most people do, but we've lived with them for quite a long time. And I'm just wondering if that is really a priority, if maybe, because I know there are security concerns with our residents right now. And if maybe we should consider maybe putting more money into that area, and maybe pushing this back a little bit further, because I really don't think it's a priority for our, for our residents.
Can I ask a question before you answer that? Are there, can we, you know, we did a big photometric study on those lights on Agora Road. Is there, is there things we can copy and paste from that? Or do we have to start all over?
It's tough. I can, I know we can probably, possibly could utilize some of that information, but we are dealing with Caltrans, where that was our right of way, and there were our lights, and so our standards. Not saying that those wouldn't be acceptable to Caltrans, we just don't know that at this point.
And if it helps, Councilmember Sylvester, you know, the $250,000 to remove, we're not thinking that those lights necessarily have to be removed and replaced. I mean, that again, can be something grant down the road or working with Caltrans. But the first step in, in changing lighting, and like what we did on Agora Road, is the photometric study. We need to first and foremost make sure, you know, what can we do and keep it still safe for pedestrians and bike riders and all that? Because we can't violate those standards. We have to make sure that they're, you know, that it's all measured out. And, but we might find that we could frost them, or put, you know, we could just modify the poles that are out there to have it be downward light. Because again, that's just, that light just shooting up into the air, which actually violates, you know, everything. Like, we wouldn't normally allow that to happen, but it's Caltrans. And so, so, you know, the $25,000 is to start that initial study. And then, of course, it would have come back to the council to decide, here's what can be done, what are we willing to pay for, if anything?
Right. I, I hear all of that. But if, if we need to find more money, this would be one area I, I would say we could consider it, pushing it if we had to.
Do you mean the 25,000 or the 250?
Well, the 250, definitely. No, but I was just thinking, if, if we find we're in a place where we have to look to cut anything, I, this would be my first choice, because it's not a priority priority.
Okay. It's my understanding, though, that these goals would all fit in within the budget, the way we have it set up right now, unless we add to it or we take out.
Right. But if we're looking, if we, if we need somewhere.
If we need to take out. Okay.
Thank you.
Regarding the tree wall, I think that's such a creative, innovative idea. And I'm sure the answer is yes, but we're not going to be planting like non-native eucalyptus, or, I mean, like, I just want to be sure that native trees will be going in there.
We would never do that.
Thank you. That's all I needed to hear.
And do we have studies that show that that works, or has a, has an actual significant impact?
We, we've actually looked at it, and I had an opportunity to speak with the biologist working on the wildlife crossing about that as well. And he's actually done that in, in quite a few places. Now, it is not as effective in blocking all of the sound as a sound wall, obviously, right. But from aesthetic standpoint, it ties into the wildlife crossing. It also does drown some of that sound off the, the 101, and it would also provide some screening. And he recommended a couple of things for us to look at in our discussions.
Great. And if I can just quickly comment on the things that the Public Works Subcommittee did not do. The modify access to the pedestrian bridge over the US 101, because I know there was a couple of people in the community who had asked us to look at that. It's, it's, it's really hard to make that, the expense to make that bridge ADA compatible is really prohibitively expensive, not to mention that there's not really space to do it. So we decided that that just wasn't really going to work, sadly, because it's a great way to get over the freeway. Seeking funding for the sound wall, I think, you know, we already talked about that. And to clean the creek behind Linderow Country Club area, good news, we don't own it. It's not in our city. So, but we are going to work with people to bring them together to clean that up back there.
And could, could we just clarify for anybody listening, when you say ADA compatible? So that the public understands what that is?
Oh, yeah, American Disabilities Act. And so, you know, if we start modifying that bridge, we have to make sure, and, and we all support that. That's, you know, that somebody that's in a wheelchair, or on crutches, or a walker, or whatever, would be able to get, use that bridge. It would be accessible to all. And it would not, there's stairs. And there's, you know, I had thought it was going to be easier than it, it is, but it's not. And especially when you get onto the roadside part of it, there's some real problems with it, from a safety standpoint. You'd have to have the, the exit for the ADA compatible ramp would be right on the curve, and it just, it, it just is really, really difficult. So sadly, it doesn't look like it's something that we can really take on. And actually, the, the other good news about that, in my opinion, is that now we have our Palo Comato Bridge. It has a very lovely bike path on it. And so people wanted it to be bike-friendly to go over the, the 101. And so it's actually not that far, especially if you're riding a bike, to just go down to the Palo Comato Bridge, which now has been, you know, has beautiful bike paths. So, you know, we felt like that was probably not a priority to, it would be, you know, it's really prohibitively expensive. It almost can't even be done.
With that, I will move to the next Communications Subcommittee. The three items that were recommended by the committee are to review our website, and that'll first be staff time to review that. And that basically is going to look at things like Zoom that weren't necessarily designed for a meeting like this. But there's new technology coming out, new programs, so we'll be looking at that the first year. And the recommendation is then to bring back any changes and do RFQ, RFPs, and we'll bring those back to the council with recommendations. The next is a, to relook at our website infrastructure and put $35,000 to upgrades, things like the search feature on the website and a couple other components. And then the final thing is to utilize $15,000 for paid social media ads, to increase our, our viewership on our information, and then to bring those data analytics back to the council, once we've completed that. And there were not any of the goals that were not recommended with this Subcommittee. So if there's any questions, glad to answer.
I have a, just a comment regarding the paid social media ads. I think that's a really smart use. We have great content here in the city and a strong social media presence, but these digital ads are shown to get more eyeballs on what we're doing. So I, I think that was a great idea, whoever brought that forward.
Be your fellow council member. So we will move on to.
Yeah, we got to get more people looking at Romero doing his podcast.
That's right. We will move on to the Community Services Subcommittee. Very briefly, the Morrison Park play equipment replacement. So we are actually going to be filing a grant application in just a couple of weeks here. The Chumash Park restroom, we're, got that work underway on our agreements and funding. And then we're also just finalizing the grant agreement for the Joint Community Center. And then we will move into the goals that are proposed for the upcoming fiscal years. The ones that are recommended are to review our Dial-A-Ride program. And staff would propose to look at our new AH Go program with that, and come back with a, a white paper or review of that in February of 2024. The next is to look at, sorry, there's, to explore, if we can go to the next slide, sorry, my slide is there. Explore additional outdoor recreation facility opportunities. That really will be staff time only. We will look at all the possibilities, private use, private property, public property. We'll look at all of that, bring that back. And then the survey study on the, regarding the basketball courts, we would also just require staff time on that to do a study, and then bring that back to the council. If the council decides to move forward that, we would bring back a cost to consider in '24, '25 fiscal year. And the final is, recommendation is to consider funding a historian, just to look at and archive our historical documents and photos with the, a budget of $20,000. And then if anything further is needed, the, the recommendation was to bring that back in the second budget year. The only goal that wasn't recommended forward is the expediting the Morrison Park play equipment. And really, if we're looking at the grant process, that, that would help expedite if we were able to get those funds. But that was not identified to, to put as a priority for the next year outside of that.
I have a question. Seeing as we just launched AH Go, and, you know, we're kind of delving into some other alternatives for moving people around town, is there a reason why the Dial-A-Ride report is nine months out? Like, can we move that up a little?
We absolutely can, if, if that's the desire of the council.
I, I feel like Dial-A-Ride is just the one thing, we've talked about it when I was on this committee. It's just, it's really ripe for some, you know, upgrades with the current ability Uber-ish type things that we're already delving into with AH Go. And I just feel like we're already doing that, and so maybe we can hasten that, because it's a huge cost for us. So if there's cost savings there, I think that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Can I, can I just say, I think what staff felt was the, they were going to see how the AH Go, what the responses from the public, whether seniors are comfortable using it, because of course familiarity is what is important for them.
Right. But AH goes in the evening, right?
Exactly. So, and it's also at the weekends, am I correct? So if, if we see that the seniors are happy to use it, then that obviously will take away the need for the Dial-A-Ride.
I just don't know if they're using it at those hours. I don't know that they're the Canyon Club dancing type. Maybe they are, you know them better than I do. But I think it's a different, it's a different demographic.
If I might jump in, thank you, Councilmember Lopez. The February 24th hits right around mid-year. So to answer your question, yes, I think you, I think the plan was to come back and have an update in fall. At that point, we would need to decide if we have to go out to bid again, or if there's any major changes. any major changes to our existing Dial-A-Ride program and if we needed to make any major changes to AHGO. And then we'd have like a full final wrap-up during mid-year if we needed to make a mid-year adjustment to the '24, '24, '25 budget. So that's where the February timeline, but I will tell you that staff had, that's kind of the outside of it. Staff has every intention of coming back to you during the fall to give you, to give you an update and maybe even ask for a little direction once we have a sense of it.
Great, great, thank you.
And summer is a hard time to dictate or to oversee Dial-A-Ride numbers. So we wanted to capture a little bit of fall.
Good.
Just, just one comment, the, you know, point, bullet point two and three about exploring additional outdoor recreational facility opportunities and surveying about the basketball courts. I would just ask staff to consider pickleball courts. I don't know what that entails. I don't know if you can use a basketball court for a pickleball court, but just would love to see that. Thank you.
Is that okay with the rest of the council? Do you have an issue with that? Okay. All right, all right. So we'll go ahead and move to our final subcommittee, which is the law enforcement, fire emergency response subcommittee. The first goal that's recommended is the funding for the cert, training and additional storage of supplies. This is a multi-year project that we can fit into the budget. It costs us $14,000. And then to commit funding to the use of technology for public safety, I just want to iterate that this would, $30,000 for both years would be out of special funds, not general funds. And I know there was concern with drones. And so after further conversations with the fire department and sheriff's department, that everybody is willing to put the drone issue aside and just look at use of cameras and security guards for that. So I just wanted to clarify that for you. And I also want to clarify, the sheriff captain, C2, was able to secure funding and they are actually at the moment installing video screens and feeds for the cameras in the station that they're going to utilize on their own already. And so if this is a, a goal that we move forward with, that would tie into that, that program. The details of it will still need to come back to the council and probably the COG as well, because other cities would be involved to secure their private security to watch those and whatnot. But all of those details would need to be worked out and they would be brought back to the council as a whole. And I wanted to clarify that.
And, and the, the cameras and the screens and the feeds are hooked up to what?
They can be private cameras in commercial areas. Hidden Hills has it around their residential areas. And then there's fire watch cameras where right now a live person actually has to sit up on a hill for 10 hours a day where we can monitor that through a camera rather than, and then you, that's, that's, and it's usually a deputy actually from the sheriff's station. So now that deputy can actually be out doing work and someone, just one person can monitor all the cameras.
Okay. And can you just go over the, the proposed goal not recommended on the cybersecurity assessment?
Absolutely. So the, the cost to do this and that, that would tie into the recommendation not to move forward was, was approximately about $50,000. I do want to iterate, though, that in our current agreement with our IT consultant, we actually do training for cybersecurity. And you may recently know some of those emails that you get. And we also have, where we, we look at all of our security measures and we do attest to those. That's part of our normal activity, but a full study was, the cost was something that was somewhat the, the committee felt was prohibitive. So we will look for additional ways that maybe don't have as much cost. And I know staff is currently working with our, the California JPIA to look at, they're, they're possibly going to fund a cybersecurity program. So we're looking at, at those options as well, but we will, cybersecurity is important to us, but just the, the cost to do that one large study was not recommended.
Thank you.
But that is going to bring us to our next steps. And so if there's any other discussion you'd like to have before we finalize these goals, the next, the next item will come back in June 14th and we will have, you'll be diving into all the numbers. We get to do our community outreach grants that will be recommended by the finance committee. I know you get excited about that every year. And then we will look for formal adoption of the budget on a meeting of June 28th. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to any questions, final comments from the council. All right. Any comments from staff? No? All right. At this time, we will adjourn this, to the regular city council meeting at 6 o'clock this evening on Wednesday, May 10th, 2023. Will the maker of the motion and a second to adjourn, please state your names.
Council, go ahead. Mayor Proton Buckley-Webber moves to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Councilmember Sylvester seconds.
Thank you. I'll defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Buckley-Webber? Mayor Anstad?
Aye.
Mayor Anstad, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.